Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, January ninth, two thousand seventeen. I'd like to call this meeting to order and I'd ask everybody to stand for the pledge.
All the nations who abide of the United States of America, until we recover, shall be as one nation under God.
Thank you. Dale?
Council President Haley?
Here.
Council Vice President Collins?
Here.
Councilman De Cruz?
Here.
Councilwoman Gledhill?
Here.
Councilman Veale?
Here.
All members present.
Item number four, I would ask somebody to make a motion to approve the work session, uh, A and B, work session and regular session from December twelve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, that brings us to item number six, A. Oh, did I? Oh, I went too fast. Yes, I make a motion to, I'm asking somebody to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda but to remove item s- what is it? Pa- page eight, six no, six E, right? That's is that that's, that's not on the consent agenda. I'm talking about the, uh, C A, um, eight E, yeah. Right, twelve E.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I-
Motion carries. Next, on page two, uh, item number six, licenses. A, a resolution granting a victulating license to NNS Massage Cafe LLC, DBA Massage Cafe, ninety-nine Fortin Road, Unit one seventeen, in Kingston, Rhode Island. Application by Noir Sawan, one ninety Outwells Avenue in Providence. Uh, this is continued from, uh, the last meeting. I would ask if anybody was here to speak on behalf of, uh, N Massage Cafe. Seeing that nobody's here, I will defer that and we can come back to that in case they do come ac- in, in, at a later time. We can move on to, uh, license six B, a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the crazy coyote chase, five K road race and one mile fun run on Saturday, April eighth, two thousand seventeen, at ten AM to Broad Rock Middle School, PTO, three fifty-one Broad Rock Road, Wakefield, subject to the execution of a hold harmless agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certi- certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured in the amount specified by the Finance Director, approval by the Rhode Island Department of Transportation and conditions of approval set by the town's Traffic and Transportation Review Committee. Uh, application by Emily Kamisky, one oh four Stony Way, uh, Wakefield, Rhode Island. Is somebody here to speak on that? Uh, coyote race. So, so do we defer that one too? Okay. They've, they've held this many, many times.
I'm comfortable approving this as is. I've, I've been to it, I know how popular it is. I don't think that anything's radically changed from the, the previous years. Um, if anybody else is comfortable with that, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve it.
Yeah, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So-
Jill, can we just make sure they know that we did approve that? Thank you.
Moving on to C, a resolution granting a theater license to the Pump House Music Works, fourteen sixty-four Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to an administrative approval. Application by Ariel Bodman, fourteen sixty-four Kingston Road, Kingston Road in Wakefield. This is a new application. Anybody here to speak on behalf?
Good evening, Board. My name is Cynthia Gifford. I'm an attorney in Wakefield. I represent Pump House Music Works. I'm a member of the Board as well and Daniel Collins?
I'm the owner.
Who's the director, owner of Shady Lee Guitars as well, is here to answer any questions that the Board might have. Um, we're seeking the license, um, really hand in hand with the special use exception that was granted by the zoning board at the last, um, at their last hearing, uh, which does allow, uh, Pump House Music Works to have a, um, a theater use, um, which also allows them to have, apply for the liquor license. So, um, we will be before you again next month on that particular hearing. Pump House Music Works is a nonprofit corporation, uh, five oh one C three, um, and, uh, it's been in existence only a few short months. However, um, it is, um, part of what's happening at the Pump House, um, and it is a, a continuation of what has been happening at Shady Lee Mills over the last several years where there have been open mics every month. So, Pump House Music Works, their purpose is to, um, encourage art and music in the community, to have performances and events, which they do on a regular basis, um, and, um, to network with as many other art and creative endeavors that there are in the community and the state or even beyond. So, we're hoping that we can be successful in getting the license and moving on and any questions, gladly answer them.
Mentioned that it's a five oh one C three, or do you have any, are you fundraising for anything in particular or is it just for networking with musicians and?
Well, there, there are actually three purposes of the five oh one C three. One is to actually support the, um, actually the Shady Lee Guitar, uh, woodworking school, which is, um, actually a luthier school, which is preserving the, um, art of making handcrafted guitars. So, there's that piece, but primarily what they're into doing is having, um, musical events, um, partially to show the guitar, um, the guitars that are being made, but also to reach out in the community and have all sorts of musical works. And, um, thirdly, to really network with, as I said, the community and bring in as many other, um, events and, uh, contributions that we can get. So, it's basically a fundraising, but part of the fundraising is also we're hoping to get some scholarships that we can give to the community for, um, making the guitars and those kinds of things. So.
How many actual businesses are going to be run out of the Pump House?
Well, there's, just go ahead.
Just two businesses. Uh, Shady Lee Guitars and Pump House Music Works.
I think it's a great idea.
Yep.
I'm particularly pleased because I think that has just been my whole life, one of the most beautiful buildings that we have here and to see it, um, underutilized and vacant, it was just such, I thought, such a tragedy and to bring the vibrancy back to that building, that's huge. It's, it's, it's a, it's a big part of this community and thank you for your interest.
Yes, it's, it's really hopping actually. Good thing.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, agenda item six C.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Best of luck. That brings us to let's see, here we have skipped a couple pages, holy moly. Uh, communications, uh, starts with item seven A. A communication dated December fifteenth from Maria Mack, Chair, Advising of the Status of the Planning Board's Review of Zoning Amendments.
Board to, um, continue on their recommendation with a special use permit and then adverti- is that what we said? Yes? And, uh, advertise it and, uh, open up to the public to get some feedback before deciding on it, but I think we all agree that we want to see this resolved, you know, in a timely manner because it has been going on for quite a while.
And that it will be coming back to this table at the next meeting or the first one in February?
As I mentioned, uh, the planning board at this point had, um, nearly completed work on the special use permit criteria aspect of this, which would be amendments to the zoning ordinance. They'd also looked at some other items that would bolster the enforceability of-
But just ne- I've ne- just never seen anything move so slow. Um, I'd, I'd like to just stress, and I think we talked about this in the work session, that this needs to come back to us quickly because we gave them good direction and I think we got a lot of information back from them. Um, it's time to act.
But is there a way that we could, I don't think there's a way we can make it go any faster though, can we, with our?
S- so, yeah, so we can vote in the next meeting to, for the advertising, right? No, we can't. Right. But yeah. Uh, I'm just trying to, so, planning board is meeting?
Meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah, I'd like to have certain damage, you know, for example, for, say, you know, for types of, especially with materials and things that damage, it's going to, uh, so, I would like as well to see this moved.
I understand that there's a process. I just wonder if we have enough information here to hold a public hearing. We have a tremendous amount of information from the planning board. Um, can we hold a public hearing based on what we already have?
Sure. Right. Okay, thank you.
Paul wants, I just noticed that Paul's in the audience, I didn't know if he was here to speak to that, I didn't want to give him. You're good? Mm-hmm. I know. Oh, definitely sharing your frustration. Like Joe's favorite saying is nothing moves slower than government. So sorry.
Did you want to come to the podium and speak? Okay. Um, let's move on to, uh, item number seven D, a communication, uh, dated December twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, from Carmen C. Peolino, submitting his resignation from the Board of Trustees of the South Kingston School Funds, is received and placed on file, and further direction?
I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the letter of resignation, uh, and Dale can, can write Charlie a letter of thanks, um, and then advertise for it in the next opportunity.
Another discussion.
Yeah, second.
Another second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. E, a communication dated January third, two thousand seventeen, from Kim L. Kimball, submitting her resignation from the school committee, effective immediately, is received and placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
There was a lot of discussion in the, the work session about this, um, I'm not sure how you want to proceed, but I, I said I was going to save my thoughts until, um, we got to it on the agenda, so I just wanted to put it out there that for me, it wouldn't, um, time wouldn't matter if we waited until the next meeting or a month from now. My, um, mind was sort of made up when I found out there was an opening and I always feel we should defer to the next highest vote getter, especially when an election was just two months ago, um, and the election being so close. Uh, as somebody who was the next highest vote getter, um, you know, I advocated for a charter change for the Town Council to, uh, stop with the special elections and to appoint the next highest vote getter. So, for me, time isn't going to change my mind. Um, I appreciate everybody's thoughts and what they're comfortable with, but for me, um, I think it would be disingenuous to not go with the next highest vote getter. I think the voters made it really clear, not only who they voted for, but in voting to pass the amendment to our charter, so that's how I feel about it.
I look to add to that. I think that, um, it's unfortunate that Ms. Kimball only lasted six weeks or seven weeks. I don't think anyone saw that coming. Um, I do think that it's possible that the vote, voter, uh, hierarchy would have been different potentially if she wasn't in the race. Um, I can sympathize with your reference to the referendum on the council, next highest vote getter. I think one of the biggest things with that was the fact that it actually cost, uh, the town money to have an election and I think that's what people were most concerned about. Um, my opinion is that this is a really important year for our town, our school budget, our town budget, and I think we need to find the most qualified person for that particular position. If I'm running a business, I would never hire anybody without having an interview. Um, I know most of the people that are interested, but I don't, I don't know them that well and, uh, I don't think that would be fair to the town and the constituents. And at the end of the day, we were elected to the council, uh, to make that decision based off of the charter.
Just to respond to that real quick, sorry, don't mean to cut you off, Joe. I I saw you starting. Um, I, I didn't interview any of the school committee members that were elected and I, I don't know most of them personally, um, so I don't feel the same way. I don't feel like I should have to do interviews. I think it's clear who the voters put their faith in, um, but I, I understand your point, but I just wanted to say I-
So, I think we decided in the work session that we were going to hold some interviews, uh, before our next council meeting, is that when we scheduled it for, Dale?
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm open to that. Again, uh, as Brian pointed out, part of the reason that, uh, at the council level where, uh, we defer to the next highest vote getter is special elections and the cost of them and that's not an issue in this case. Uh, I think more information would be better.
I, I, I agree with those sentiments, um, and I think having a couple weeks will not put undue burden on the school committee not having their full complement. Um, I think what we need to do here though is, is make a motion to accept the, uh, resignation for one thing, um, and then we can talk about the process of submitting applications. Um, so I'd make a motion to accept, uh, Kim Kimball's resignation.
Are you, are you saying that we don't have to accept it?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And just as an aside, um, what I wanted to say about this issue as well is it's difficult and the voters are the people that do have the choice because they come out to vote for who they think is the most prudent person and who the person is that will be successful in fulfilling the obligations of the position. Um, however, I say that we as a council are now tasked to make an appointment, um, and not myself knowing all of the candidates that might be interested, I would not like to make a hasty decision based on a name or a number on the ballot, which it may come down to the number five person, I will not discount that. Um, but I would personally like to be able to have the opportunity to have those people come before the council because we as a council also have an obligation to the community and to the people who've entrusted faith in us for making our decisions. So, I, I would really like the opportunity to speak with the people that we will be appointed and pointing, um, I think that's really important.
You know, with that said, you know, the folks that are in the audience, if you feel free to comment such a thing.
Yes, once we open comments from interested citizens, anybody is welcome to come up to the podium, um, and speak and that might get, even give us more perspective and I would welcome that opportunity.
So, I don't know if we mentioned it, but, um, in the work session we discussed this, uh, the date in order to get, uh, your application letter of interest into the town would be Wednesday, January eighteenth by twelve PM. Um, and I believe three people have sort of officially done that. Um, we're getting letters about more people, but if, if you're one of those people, I, so it's Brian Klezak, um, Andrew Gil Martin and Scott have all put in letters. Did Roland put in the letter? Okay. Um, so we have four now, if they're more interested, you're welcome to, to put in a letter as well.
That brings us to, um, F, seven F. A communication dated December fifteenth from Larry Fish, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, requesting a joint work session with the Town Council to provide an update of progress on their work items and discuss ideas for consideration moving forward, is received and placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
For our discussion, the work session, we scheduled it for the thirtieth at seven o'clock, um, so I would make a motion that we, um, place that communication on file and reach out to them and confirm whether-
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to page seven, item number eight, comments from interested citizens. And at this time, I would like you to come up, if you have any comments, and state your name at the podium and comment section, as you all know, does not give us the opportunity to vote on anything, but it does give you the opportunity to comment and we ask that you limit your comments to a period of five minutes. So, anybody who wishes to speak, please come forward.
Hello, um, I'm Rae Samosha and I just wanted to speak a little bit to the resignation and the appointment of the school committee member. Um, in, from my perspective, the voters spoke and, um, they voted for Kim Kimball and still here we are. So, I think that, I'm not used to being on this side of the microphone, it's nerve wracking. It's, um, so, I think that in some respect, I feel like maybe we failed the candidates or the community in, um, communicating what the role really encompasses and I think that's an important part of your decision. And so, I'm happy to ask Mary Ellen to forward to you all the number of meetings that we've had over the course of the past year, the past two years, whatever it is, because this is a huge time commitment and so it's going to require somebody knowing that and, and I think maybe, um, like I said, I don't, I don't think we, we articulated that well. Um, we serve on negotiations, we have three negotiations coming up this year, we have community conversations, we have work sessions, we have teacher grievance hearings, we have student hearings. This is a big job. So, I appreciate the fact that you're going to put it out to interview and talk to people about their level of commitment and certainly we can't change drastic things that happen in someone's life, but in, in my six years, I haven't seen someone resign after six weeks. So, that's, that's what we have to remember got us to this position, not, not the election. So, I'm, I'm glad that you all are taking it seriously and, and are going to interview candidates for the role. Thank you.
I'm Helen Farrell Allen. I run into fugit in an effort to have the history of our country and our, and our county and our town known, particularly to our children.
Helen, yeah, we can't hear you, can yeah, that's better, thank you.
Uh, but particularly to our children. I will admit that, uh, the only superintendent who's cared about my work, I'm sorry to say this, was Jack Harrington, but I go on. Um, I am delighted to know that, uh, the suggestion last year that we mark Wednesday, February twenty-second, as the, as Pres- as General George Washington's birthday has been, was admitted last year, thanks to Abel Collins who introduced it, and I was just told a few minutes ago by Colleen that the letter I received then, I hadn't realized this, sets that day in perpetuity. And so, we become a town that's going to mark that birthday of our first president, well, forever. I discovered though, however, and I'll try to be very quick, that the Washington Trust Bank, which was founded only a few weeks after Washington's death, he died on, in December thirteenth of seventeen ninety-nine, at age seven, at age sixty-three. Only a few weeks later, the good gentleman of, um, Westerly established a bank, a public bank, a commercial bank, in his name. And over the years, taking that name, they have been very loyal to my work, uh, in supporting what efforts I wanted to make to continue the history, particularly of George Washington. Colonel Washington, I think you all know, Colonel Washington arrived with five men on the Boston Post Road at Yeol Tavern, Docray Street, Willet Avenue. I hope you all know where it was. Um, we celebrated with Washington Trust money two or three different times with Washington rides. However, Washington Trust has changed a good deal, I found the other day. I don't know how many of you have ATM cards, I didn't bring mine. You know that they now have to have chips. I was told the other day when I was, when he was explaining to me why the standing, um, presentation of General Washington crossing the Delaware, you know, standing, uh, was going to be scrapped because the chip had to be right in the middle of the card and therefore it would efface the face of General Washington. Okay, said I find another portrait. Well, they didn't. And also today I was shown an ATM card in which a chip had been in place way over on the left-hand side, on the margin. In other words, it doesn't have to be in the center, I don't think, but I've not talked to anybody at the bank. Um, they elected to, to, rather than check around and find another portrait of Washington, and there is one of him, in his bright red British Grenadier, uh, jacket, when he was a colonel, and he was here in that jacket, not, well, we all know at Yeol Tavern. That portrait exists today in Mount Vernon, in Washington's own study. It's well-known. It's owned by Washington and Lee, I think, but I know where it is. So, I got angry, did nothing, thought I'd announce it at least because I think it's an insult to our first pres- president and, uh, all we can do is hope that, uh, perhaps if we let our, um, clerks know, as we receive these new cards in the mail, which we will do in various batches, the only thing on that card is an enlarged, emblazoned, bright gold version of their very modest TW. Have any of you seen the new cards? I think I'm accurate. So, just sitting up there and, I'm standing up here, just saying in that doggone it, my firm is, I, and I have written and I gave an officer a time to respond, of course, this past week and I've had no response. So, there it is. Um, and I thank you all for supporting the day and I hope we will go forth and try to show our country the quality of the position of President of the United States of America. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tara Apperson, twenty Allen Ave. Um, so I was disappointed to hear you say that you want to open the school committee vacancy up to end- up to anyone. I feel like we have a democratic process, and that process took place two months ago in the form of our election. Those truly interested in being on the committee stepped forward, campaigned, participated in forums in which the community was able to ask questions, and they were interviewed by local papers, and I feel like at this point, to allow someone to step forward who was not part of the recent election would allow that person to circumvent the public process that already took place, and that doesn't seem democratic to me. So, I urge you to consider appointing the next highest vote getter, Andrew Gil Martin, who is within fifty votes of the candidate above him. I believe from attending the forums and from talking to him that he's qualified, and if you weren't able to attend the forums, I know that they're available to view, and I urge you to do that, rather than make a decision based on someone's personal statement of their qualifications. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Andrew Gil Martin. I actually, I'm not going to talk about the school committee, because I'll wait for the interview process, but I did want to thank you for plowing the sidewalks on Broadrock Road and Kingston Road, so the kids can actually walk to school. Thank you.
Hello, Alicia Collins, I'm the Chair of the South Kingston School Committee. I just wanted to comment on filling the vacancy for the school committee. Not here to share what my personal preference would be, but if I were to guess what's best for my committee without actually talking to them, I think Scott Mueller would be the right choice to fill the vacancy. Scott's been on the school committee for twenty-four years. You know, I didn't run with him, I ran against him, but now that I'm the Chair, I just see that he might, or he could potentially bring the most to the committee. He has incredible experience in negotiating teacher contracts, which we're in a contract year, negotiation year right now, and it's an arduous task, and it's one that we need someone like Scott for, I believe. He's a mediator, and again, he's done this many years in a row successfully, so I hope you'll consider that when you're going through the review process. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Roland Benjamin, you all know me. I'm the one that put my name in that didn't run this time, right? So, and I've seen that criticism, I know that criticism, I was part of this, been part of this process for years. I wanted to just take a couple of minutes to describe some of that, and before I did, just confirm that the technicalities, that you have what you need, acknowledging my interest in this, or do you need anything else from me paperwork-wise? Right?
No, I think.
Okay, so we're good. Okay. The first time I engaged in actual electoral politics in town was back in two thousand and ten, early in the year, when there was, the beginning of the funding formula, we talked about reduced state aid, and that conversation that began in February and March was starting to immediately have implications on school policy, including reconfiguration of school buildings, whether we would have four elementary schools, and that type of thing. Those dominated every meeting that spring and end of winter, spring, almost even into summer. Almost nothing was discussed that whole entire time because of a budget issue of about a half a percent, three hundred thousand dollars, which was one of the numbers being talked about. That's when I chose to run. Right now, this year in June, I didn't think we would be facing that same type of issue. I chose not to run this year. I've run three times for local office. This year, when, but after the election, I looked at some of the rhetoric coming from your campaigns on the Town Council, and now the current school committee. I attended this first budget meeting that was here with the joint boards, and I see that there is a very, very serious problem. So, my involvement in the town started in electoral activity back in two thousand and ten. Even prior to that, I was on the superintendent's selection panel, community interviewing nine superintendents for the spot. I've served, after losing an election, coming in one place out of the top four. I served on an accountability subcommittee that was originally existed by charter for two years. I was instrumental in coming up with the teacher satisfaction survey that's still in use today. I was, in two thousand and twelve, in that cycle, there was also another vacancy hearing where a very quick process appointed someone else other than me despite the fifth-place status. I ran again in two thousand and twelve as a fiscal conservative in a difficult year for someone like that with Obama being reelected. I get fifty-eight hundred votes that cycle. Despite losing, I came back to serve on a second term on accountability. I sat with Brian DeCruz, I sat with a couple other school committee members that were here for that two years. I served out that entire term. Applied again for a vacancy in two thousand and thirteen, was narrowly chosen over a former person that had already stepped off of the school committee. Been engaged with the PTO since my kids have been in school. Now, my personal credentials are financially based specifically, but organizationally based as well. I own a business with fifty, fifty-five employees. I've had as many as ninety-eight employees. I've been, I know finance quite well, and I think that's our biggest challenge. So, I looked at this cycle and said, now more than ever, we need to not repeat what happened in two thousand and ten, where you have three, four, five, six months of budgetary discussions with almost no ability to talk about policy, structures, you know, progressive issues. You know, I've seen my name unknowingly almost criticized today on social media for stepping into this race, talking about my commitment to this town, to my commitment to this office. You know that I've run three times, you all know me, you all seen my name, we've talked at precincts during elections. You know that I've coached kids, you know that I've coached youth sports. Probably five hundred kids in the school system right now have had me as a coach at one point or another. I remember watching my son finish up his eighth-grade class, and I'm reading through the list, and I swear three-quarters of them I had on a team at one point or another. I donated six iPads to Wakefield School when a teacher asked for them. I'm on the Board of Directors for Gear Productions, and now, but most, all that being said, I look at this actual process right now, today, with three bargaining units up for negotiation, with a pretty wide gap in expectations from the Town Council to the school committee, and I say, now is when I'm needed. I didn't think this was going to happen in June, when you have to file for this, your original intent. Right now, I feel like I can help, and I feel like I want to help. That's all I want to say, we can finish more in the interview process, but thanks.
Hi, I'm Brooke Conley, and I just wanted to say that, I want to support the democratic process. We had it two months ago, people who were interested in our kids and our schools decided to run for election and show their interest that way, and the community considered them. The community considered a lot of things, the things that were important to us, and I think the people that we chose are choosing to take us in a direction that honors the whole child, that is, opposite of a lot of the current school reform policies that are only centered on finance. So, I think the elections, just being two months ago, really show you what the people want. They were just two months ago. We just went through this. So, there were two people that were very close. Not to choose them, I think, no offense to anyone who would put their name out there, I appreciate that, everyone does appreciate people who come forward and want to help, but it's disrespectful to the people and to the democratic process. Thank you.
Jonathan Dela Bell, I'm on the school committee. So, I just want to weigh in with some thoughts, hopefully you'll consider. You know, I squeaked in, you know, I came in fourth, I need to come, you need to be one, two, three, or four, I came in fourth, I was thirty-five votes ahead of Andrew Gil Martin. So, you know, the voters really liked Andrew Gil Martin, and we had an election process. So, I don't know how you flip that around. I just don't, I don't understand it at all. So, the Town Council, yeah, I mean, if people voted seventy-five percent to twenty-five percent to have the next highest vote getter for Town Council, if all the voters were worried about was ten thousand or fifteen thousand, whatever it cost for one of the election, then, like, we've got huge problems. You know, I don't think that was the issue. I think the issue is people like democracy, and so if they can apply it, they'll apply it. For five people on the Town Council to go around that, doesn't sound too good. What I heard from the voters with Alicia Collins and Kim Kimball, I mean, those two, they just trounced everybody else, and they're independent, and they're different. So, that's what the voters said. And the next closest person to that really would be Andrew or Brian Klezak. Now, during the election, Brian and I supported each other, so if it were up to me, on a personal level, outside of policy, I prefer Brian, just because that's, we ran together, we supported each other. But from a democratic standpoint, and a process standpoint, seems very clear that it's Andrew. The Democrats came in sixth, except for Michelle, who came in third. The Democrats came in sixth, eighth, and ninth. So, to put in another Democrat, which is really, and Scott Mueller, he was better to me than anybody else on that committee, so no disrespect to him whatsoever. But basically, the voters said they wanted different people, so I don't think Scott is the right choice either, even though he was very close to. The Republican Party, you know, I mean, people in South Kingston don't want to elect them. They can all be great people, I know them personally, I see positive attributes in all of them, but South Kingston has made a conscious decision to not elect them. The last time a Republican has held office in South Kingston is two thousand and four. Roland, you know, I mean, he lost three times. So, he can be a great guy, he can have all the qualifications in the world, voters voted against him three times. Two thousand and fourteen, there were four Republicans who ran for Town Council, they came in ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, all like last. So, I just don't see what, if you're going, and then, so, I don't see how you would put in somebody who didn't run, the voters have decided against. What the voter, if you want to say the voters are all wrong, that's really what you'd be saying, and that just doesn't seem very right. I don't know, that might be about it. So, I guess just the last piece, if you're going to have an application process, don't do, I mean, make it fair to everybody. If you're opening it up to people who didn't even run, do it proper, cast a wide net. Because if you're just going with an insider, with an insider process, then that's just another subversion of democracy. And I like all you folks, you're all good.
Evening, I'm Brian Klezak. I am interested in the position, but I also feel that Andrew was the top go-getter out of the people that are looking for the position at this time. So, if I were to work for the town, I would hand it over to Andrew, because he's the one that won it for the town. The townspeople have spoken, so I encourage you all to think about what the town people are voting for. What did we all do in November? We all ran. All of you were elected because of the people in this town, they came out in numbers. So, I encourage you all to think about, who do we really want? Somebody that the town people want, because these town people, they can also get rid of us of all, get rid of anybody that's on any committee at some point. So, if I'm not a choice, that's fine, but I think we owe it to Andrew for the number of votes he got. Thank you.
Can be about anything, doesn't have to be about school committee appointments.
I just wanted to extend my condolences to Steve, obviously, he's not here tonight, and he had a loss in his family, and I think it speaks to his character for him sticking it out last week with all the work sessions that we had with the capital improvement program, and hope he knows we're thinking about him, and looking forward to seeing him at the next meeting.
If there are, not any more comments, I do have something I would like to do, Vin Murray. This is a proclamation for Vin Murray, who has served the town extremely well for the past twenty-plus years, if I'm not mistaken, and who's looking to retire. This is his last council meeting, so in my position, here as President and with the approval of the rest of the council, it's a proclamation, whereas L Vincent Murray was appointed the Director of Planning for the Town of South Kingston in August two thousand and three, having served as senior planner for the town since nineteen ninety-eight. Prior to his employment with the Town of South Kingston, Vin also served as the Director of Planning for the Towns of East Greenwich and North Kingston, and held several senior planning positions in the city of Warwick, including the Director of Economic and Community Development. And whereas he has successfully and effectively applied his talents as a professional planner to improve the quality of life here in South Kingston by implementing the Town Council goals relating to the comprehensive community plan, economic development, conservation, and sustainability efforts, open space preservation, and affordable housing. And whereas Vin is a member of the Statewide Planning Council, the American Planning Association, Roadmap R I, the University of Rhode Island Master Plan Committee, and staff liaison to the Planning Board, Affordable Housing Collaborative Committee, Coastal Resources Management Council, I'm getting tired of reading all this, and the Route One Thirty-eight Project Area Committee. And whereas Vin's communication skills are evident in the multitude of memorable, excuse me, memorandums he has prepared, and the professional entertaining presentations he has given throughout his career, he will be greatly missed by his fellow staff members for his willingness to assist leadership skills, dry sense of humor, and his Irish wit. He has tendered his resignation to the Town of South Kingston to spend more time with his wife Kathy, skiing in Killington, Vermont, attending music festivals, traveling, and leisurely frequenting the newest and oldest restaurants and pubs in the area. Now, therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of South Kingston, do hereby extend our thanks and appreciation to Vin Murray for his contributions and devoted service to the Town of South Kingston, and we wish to him a happy, healthy retirement and success in all of his future endeavors. Vin?
I'll just second what the, the proclamation just said, thank you for your service for all those years, Vin. I think probably the best part is you get to continue living in SK here with all of us and enjoying the community that you've helped build into what it is, which is the best place in Rhode Island, let's face it. So, thank you.
I'm sure we'll be seeing you at the Monday meeting still.
Perhaps not, but I do, you know, live in town, love the town, it's been a privilege to serve. This is, as noted in the pro, I've worked for other communities in the state, good places, but not South Kingston. My real professional development began, really began here. Steve has been a tremendous mentor, I've been privileged to work with great staff in the Planning Board, past and present, wonderful people in Town Hall, great council people, good committees. It's been very challenging, a lot of work, but I've learned a lot and hopefully contributed to a place that I hold very dear and to my heart and plan to stay here. SK is the, is the number one community in Rhode Island and probably, you know, New England as well, it's a great place. Thank you.
And before we move on, as I said, what I would like to do is, he did not want me to have a moment of silence the other night, but in the passing of his father, I'd like to have a moment of silence on his behalf, please. If there's no more comments, we will move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Just a couple of items, as the council is aware, this Wednesday evening, the eleventh, the last of the workshop on the Capital Improvement Program meetings with the school committee, beginning at six-thirty. Also, it was noted in, I think, different interim reports, but the town is a recent recipient of an award to the wastewater treatment plant. It was the two thousand and sixteen EPA Regional Operations and Maintenance Excellence, Excellence Award, and I think it's prestigious and it's a tribute to the hard work of the Wastewater Division and Department of Public Services on behalf of a regional partnership, and I think it's a real feather in the town's cap to receive that recognition from the Environmental Protection Agency. And lastly, I would make note that later this month, the Planning Board will be conducting two workshop-type meetings with regard to the update, the now underway update of the Comprehensive Community Plan on the twenty-sixth of January in these chambers, which is a Thursday evening, beginning at six PM. There will be a public workshop on the comp plan update, talk about the process and solicit public input on, you know, whatever items for inclusion, or change, or of concern with regard to the town's future from a planning point of view. And following on Friday, there will be an open house, also on the, obviously linked to the comprehensive plan of war, interactive and kind of a drop-in type of meeting, and that will be held over at the Community Room at the YMCA on Broad Rock, Broad Rock Road. And so that's Friday, the twenty-seventh of January, and it's going to run from two to eight. I believe we'll have refreshments, and there'll be workshops, stations set up for different topics, and people can interact with staff, our consultants, and members of the Planning Board, and talk about their concerns, aspirations, other aspects of the planning, future for the community.
Vin, if you can just pass on to the Town Manager and anybody else that it's relevant to, but the Public Works Department did a phenomenal job with clearing the roads during the storm. I was down at Wakefield School on Sunday by ten AM, and the sidewalks leading down to it were cleared, and I don't know who carved the path perfectly up the sledding hill, but that was all taken care of, and it was just really nice to see, and I think that we're lucky to live in a community that, that is so proactive and, and really receptive to people, so make sure they know that we appreciate their work.
Moving on to, is there a further discussion? Town Solicitors' Report. Okay. Then we go on to item eleven, appointments.
I'll make a resolution to appoint William Wallace as a tree warden for the Town of South Kingston for the year two thousand seventeen.
Aye. New business, twelve A, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Regeri Brothers, Inc., eleven ninety-one Pontiac Avenue in Cranston, to furnish and install new carpet, tile, and broadloom carpet, and all appurtenances to complete the project at the Kingston Free Library in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand one hundred and thirty dollars, including a contingency of one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars, and as further described in a memorandum from the library director to the Town Manager dated December twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen, entitled Bid Recommendation Carpet Replacement at the Kingston Free Library.
Would note, for the record, in the, in Ms. Clark's memorandum, that the carpets are over twenty years old at the facility, and they solicited bids in December of two thousand and sixteen, and the bids were posted on the town's online municipal vendor bidding and notification system, and advertised in the Independent. There was one sealed bid received, as noted, from Regeri Brothers Carpets, and the, I would also just make note that, in large measure, this improvement to the facility is being funded through a grant from the Champlin Foundation in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, so that's essentially the lion's share of the cost, so would recommend, per the manager's recommendation for the low bid.
Motion to approve item twelve A as presented. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Moving on to B, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Arden Engineering Constructors' LLC, five oh five Narragansett Park Drive in Pawtucket, Rhode Island, for materials and labor to install an HVAC system at the Peasdale Office Building, ten fifty-eight Kingston Road, in accordance with all bid specifications in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, including a contingency of three thousand dollars, and as further described in a memorandum from the Leisure Services Director to the Town Manager dated December twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, entitled Bid Recommendation, Peasdale Office Building HVAC.
This item would install, I guess, what they call a mini-split system, and it goes along with other improvements to the building, and it'll be space, I understand, would be occupied by Beekman Violin, and, you know, those, mini-split systems have been used here in the Town Hall and some of the offices, and they, they were very effective, very efficient, essentially a pretty green technology for that type of use, so would recommend in accordance with the Town Manager's recommendation.
Vin, in the bids for this project, there was a big discrepancy between one of the bids, any idea what that was based on, or?
No, I, there, well, there were three received, as I recall, and two were fairly well clustered, and then one, one was a bit higher, sometimes.
I should know if there's any potential there, there might be work that we don't foresee or something that...
Hopefully not, there, I mean, there is the modest contingency established, but these are relatively simple units to install, and so hopefully this will work well for us. It's a well-known company that, with proper references as well.
Motion to approve item twelve B as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Moving to page nine, F.
Hold on, we removed item E from the consent agenda so that I could recuse myself from that and the previous one, so.
Okay, so we'll go back to, I think that is a resolution authorizing the Town Clerk to advertise for order of notice a public hearing relative to an application for a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingston in accordance with the general laws of nineteen fifty-six, as amended as follows. Class T legitimate theater liquor license, application for a class T legitimate theater liquor license by Pump House Music Works, fourteen sixty-four Kingston Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Daniel U. Collins, Director for the Presentation Gallery and Hand to Workroom, in accordance with a special use permit granted December twenty-first, two thousand sixteen, by the zoning Board of EPO, and as further defined in the site plans dated January fourth, two thousand seventeen, on file in the Town Clerk's office.
Motion to approve agenda item twelve E to advertise.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? And, recuse, one recusal we have. Okay, going on to F, a resolution authorizing the extension of an award of a contract originally granted on January twelfth, two thousand fifteen, to Santa Buckley Energy, Inc., PO Box eleven forty-one, Bridgeport, Bridgeport, Connecticut, the purchase of unleaded gasoline from January one, two thousand seventeen, to December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, at the Oil Price Information Services, OPIS, Daily Low Price Port of Providence or Boston, plus the increment of point zero four nine seven cents a gallon, in accordance with specifications as described and awarded by the Town of Smithfield on December nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, and as further described in a memorandum from the Procurement Administrator to the Town Manager dated January third, two thousand seventeen, and entitled Contract Award Extension Gasoline and Diesel Fuel.
This is a consideration of an extension of an existing contract that we have that rides the state master purchasing agreement, and it was contemplated in the original award, and it, and it does indeed relates to our unleaded gasoline purchasing for the, the town's fleet, so I recommend in accordance with the procurement administrator's suggestion.
Make a motion to approve agenda items F and G. G also is a similar item, it applies to diesel, but it's still under the state bid, I think we can combine those, Vin?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to H, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Colonial Chevrolet, one seventy-one Great Road Act in Massachusetts, for two two thousand sixteen Chevrolet Equinox AWD SUVs in accordance with the state MPA number four seven eight two oh one six, in an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated January fourth, two thousand seventeen, and entitled Award Recommendation Sport Utility Vehicles.
This is a replacement of two vehicles that are used by the Wastewater Division and Highway Division under the Public Services Department. One is for a two thousand and seven vehicle with over one hundred thousand miles on it that would be replaced, and that two thousand and seven, I believe, would be used as a pool car for, for the Public Services Office. The second vehicle for the Wastewater Division would replace a newer vehicle that was in a accident and the insurance settlement from the town's insurance carrier, I believe, would compensate for the cost of that vehicle, but it's two vehicles to be replaced for public services generally, and for those two divisions, and the, it would ride the state MPA agreement, and would recommend favorable consideration in accordance with Mr. Schach's memorandum.
Motion to approve item twelve H as presented.
Second, but I do have a comment. I know during our last capital improvement program, we had, Susan Marcus came forward just to mention that she'd like the town to look at using vehicles that might be a little more environmental friendly, and I just hope that in the future we'll, you know, maybe explore that and see if that's an option for us. I know that the gas mileage on those Equinoxes is kind of terrible, but maybe we can, we can look to see how, if we can provide the town more efficient vehicles, or, you know, as we're developing our comprehensive plan, to really focus in on that.
Moving on to, is there a further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. It's eight thirty-five, the meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-five PM.